Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Public participation is encouraged in the meeting. You can attend here live at the council chambers or watch the meeting live on Channel 4 or on our website at LHCaz.gov/TV. We'll now have the invocation from Pastor Dean Wiles from Abundant Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Hannah Rangel from the Lake Havasu Museum of History. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening.
Could you turn on the microphone?
Here we go. Thank you sir about that. Before we pray, Mayor, I just, I was gathering with our family. My family, the kids and grandkids flew in from Texas and then told them I needed to go and they said, "What do you need to do?" I said, "I need to go give the invocation for city council meeting." They're like, "What is invocation?" I said, "Well, it's a fancy word just for prayer." They said, "What? You're gonna pray at the city council meeting?" I said, "Yeah." "You can say God at the city council meeting?" I said, "Yeah." And they all were just like, "Whoa, that's pretty cool that our city still allows that." And so I just want to thank you for still remembering and taking this opportunity just to remember God and including God. And we know in Psalm 33, it just says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And not only that, I just want to say, you know, everybody maybe in this room or watching, they may be at various places, maybe even their thoughts about God. Some may not even believe in God. And I just wanted to say that I respect and I just honor those for allowing us to take this moment just to include God in this meeting tonight. So, thank you for that. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you again for this opportunity that we can just talk to you because of what you've done for us, Jesus. And Lord, we don't want to just take you for granted, but we really want to just say thanks for all your blessings upon our city, upon each person. Lord, we again never want to take for granted your blessings and we just thank you for this great community of Lake Havasu City. Lord, we pray that you continue to bless our city, bless the people, bless the businesses of our community, bless the people, the schools. God bless our mayor, the city council, and all the different levels of leadership, the judicial system, God, our police force, our fire departments and first responders, God for our doctors, nurses. We just thank you for all of them and how they serve our community. We pray that your hand would continue to be upon them and protect and use them. Give them all wisdom, God, even this agenda that's set before the council tonight. I pray that you give them all wisdom and understanding and how to handle the different situations. Some, God, even in the public hall, they may not even know what's coming their way. Give them wisdom to handle the situations, God. Continue to bless each one. And Lord, help us all just to continue to honor and encourage one another, even though we may not see everything eye to eye. May we still treat each other as fellow Americans and just respect and honor each other. And again, Lord, we just, we thank you. As we go into this season with a lot of our snowbirds are coming back into town, we pray your protection as they travel here. And God, let this just be a great season for everyone and continue just to bless even the weather and everything that's going on here in Lake Havasu City. And God, again, you are awesome. And Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity. Bless, continue to bless Lake Havasu City and all the people. We love you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Hannah, if you want to share about the museum and all the good work you're doing?
Sure. So I'm from the Lake Havasu Museum of History. Thank you for having me tonight. We're working on all kinds of things. Basically, we opened in April again for a new renovation. So we've expanded a little bit on our collections, bringing things out into the community as well. We're working on kind of continuing to bring out more of our storage collections and expanding our facility. Right now, we have a couple of new things going on this year. We have a new youth program. We now have eight participants of children ages ranging from 13 to 17 working in the museum, docenting and teaching history of Lake Havasu City that we are very, very, very happy to have. And then we are also starting our education programs, which started at the beginning of the summer, where we've had interactive and educational kind of programs that are going on Saturdays for families. And we were very lucky because we ended up having about 2,000 families this summer come in and visit us for our exhibits and our programs. We have a new exhibit called Wild America. Everybody come and see. It's all about, it was a loan from Natural History Museum in Las Vegas and it is predatory animals of North America. And the kids seem to love it. So we've had a lot of return visitors. We're getting really excited and vamped up. We're working with the city, of course, on the 50th anniversary of the dedication of the bridge. And we have fabulous fun things. We've got the Havasu Classic coming up. We have many dinners, many dinners, teas, dances. We have, oh my gosh, the freestyle expos are coming up. So if anybody's interested in any of those programs are on Go Lake Havasu as well as our website. And it's gonna be a fantastic October. I'm really excited. Okay?
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for all that you're doing. And what a great year for you to be here and commemorate the 50 years of the London Bridge. So thank you.
It ended up being perfect, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, the next item on the agenda is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
I never left.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch? Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining and red means that your three minutes is up. And again, we cannot have a two-way conversation. So we'll listen intently to the conversation that you may be having and then we'll direct staff if accordingly, depending on what the item is. You don't have to speak up, you don't have to sign up to speak, but we did have several that did. So we'll go in the order in which they signed up and then anyone else that would like to address this can do so. So we'll start with Ms. Christine Simmons. Good evening, welcome.
Need to lower this a little bit. Thank you. Well, first I want to start off with, "Thank you, Mayor." The affair on Sunday for the memorial was beautiful and the program was outstanding and the children singing, it was so meaningful, but you did an outstanding job in your speech and you even used the word kindness two or three times, just saying that. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I saw myself on YouTube, but I couldn't believe it. You know, you go on YouTube and you search Lake Havasu City Council and, oh my gosh, there I was. Anyway, I have a huge thank you to Havasu because I didn't know when I chose to retire here that you're the most patriotic city. And I drive the streets and I see the flags in all my neighbors' yards. And David Lane, if you don't know about his project, he puts flags in your yard on special days. So contact him. And I want to thank our police and our fire for keeping a city safe for us. We are so special here in Havasu. We really are. And I have a message for our president. Please Biden, bring all our Americans home and our interpreters. We don't leave them behind. So please, that's a little message from me to you. Our paper supplied everyone with a flag. So if you didn't have a flag to fly for 9/11, they provided it. Wonderful. And I have to tell you, I went to Las Vegas the other day and I was wearing my mask because you couldn't go into Costco unless you wore a mask. And a nice lady told me that I was wearing it inside out. And I said, "Gee, I'm sorry. I'm from Lake Havasu and we don't have to wear them there." So, woo-hoo. Anyway, just another thing. You know, it's our 50th year with the bridge, but do you know that my very first kindergarten class is turning 50 this year? I know I don't look it, but I'm that old, yes. And anyway, join the kindness matters. I wouldn't be anywhere without my props. And I give two cards. And you know what came around today, full circle, only in Havasu this could happen? I went to lunch with a friend and she said, "I was at a meeting and a lady was passing out kindness cards." And she said, "Where'd you get them?" She goes, "Christine Simmons. I've passed out 2,000 cards." So some of you have received them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Greg Befford.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, for the record. My name is Greg Befford, resident Lake Havasu City. And we've gone from 14 days to flatten the curve to now mandatory vaccinations or else you'll lose your job. And this applies to employees and citizens of the city of Lake Havasu. Anybody who believes that this is about your health at this point is either naive or complicit or both. And unfortunately, this city council has chosen to, where I was here a year ago, this month in front of you, telling you the problem is you're not discerning the truth from a lie. You chose to embrace a lie and ignore the truth. You ignored the harm that you were potentially going to cause to the citizens of this community by your actions. And I'm not talking about all of you because all of you weren't on the board at the time. And you act those still though, that people at Lake Havasu, they have a choice. You know, we'll trust them to have a choice. Well, then why a mask mandate? Why send officers to businesses to shut them down? So don't tell me about how you give people a choice and you haven't been complicit in this. We still have a local emergency proclamation that is still in place, declaring that there are conditions for a local emergency proclamation that you have refused to rescind. You are holding up the false narrative, the lie, and are continuing to ignore the truth. I'm asking for leadership from this city council. And that's what I've asked for all along. You followed, you were a follower, which meant you set your consciousness up on a shelf, knowing that your actions were going to cause harm to people. And look where we are now. We were here a year ago so that we didn't get to the point where we are now. We tried to speak out and now those people, and there's plenty of complicitness to go around and that includes the citizens here who stood by and said nothing, said nothing while this was happening. And now that they're affected, we have people with employees over 100, if you have an employee over 100, it's mandatory for them now. What's your position on this, city council? We don't know. We don't know because you stayed silent, all of you have, and ignored your responsibility to protect our constitutional rights. The county board of supervisors stepped up. They declared a proclamation last week saying that it's unconstitutional to do what you're doing and we don't support it. What's your position, Mayor, city council? Are you gonna stay silent? Are you gonna continue to stay silent and support this narrative? Or are you gonna step up and do your job? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Derek Bell.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. My name is Derek Bilkey. Born and raised locally, after graduating in 2005, following a childhood dream of becoming a helicopter pilot, I moved all around the country, joined the military, and did whatever else I had to do to make this happen. Three years ago, I moved back here to Lake Havasu owning my own helicopter company, Optic Helicopters, specializing in media coverage for the boating and off-road communities and other special events, as well as helicopter tours to the general public. The business, however, was a part-time, one-man operation as it could not produce enough customer traffic due to the lack of accessibility of the airport from the other main tourism attractions in town. Fast forward to March 21, I was able to start working with Island Inn Hotel to come up with a safe and effective plan and land use agreement to offer full-time helicopter rides from the vacant lot in front of their hotel, right on the island, easily accessible to the public. As part of this process, I submitted a business license application to the city, knowing that there would be safety and operation questions arise. I also included a three-page letter of explanation with this application explaining the operation in detail with flight paths, landing areas, why it was safe and why it was a positive impact on the community, as well as explaining my FAA certifications and authorizations allowing me to conduct such operation. I also stated that if there was any questions or concerns or permits or anything else I needed, please contact me. With no contact by the city, my business license was issued to me on March 4, 2021. Underneath the impression I was cleared by the city to operate here at the new location, on July 4, 21, I moved our full-time location to the Island Inn Hotel. After immediate success, I frantically had to triple or more than triple our staff and start investing as much as we possibly could into renovations to the land as well as the hotel as it was clear now that this was going to be our permanent location. It has now suddenly come to our and the city's attention that there is a city code, which is 9.16.160, preventing the landing of aircraft at city limits. And we have been forced to shut down the island location and move back to the airport, which is a devastating impact to not only my business, but many other businesses that we support as well. This also includes a major roadblock for Skydive Havasu, which is a future tourism company that is attempting to offer yet another exciting attraction to this town. After intense research and planning, we have come up with a new proposed city code that allow me to continue our helicopter operations on the island as well as allow for safe expansion of other attractions such as Skydive Lake Havasu or Skydive Havasu. And I ask that this matter is put on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel and Matt Maxwell. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Maxwell and this is my husband, Matt Maxwell. And we are interested in starting a business here in Havasu. We would like to start a skydiving business. A little bit about myself, my background is in business management and I have over a decades worth of customer service experience. My husband is active-duty military freefall instructor with roughly 1,700 jumps under his belt. He is also a tandem instructor as well, who has worked at many different drop zones. And I'm going to pass it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We've talked to some of you on the phone. That's been a pleasure and met some of you in person as well. So she builds me up a lot more than I am. But no, I've been in the military for about 17 years. I currently work as a military freefall instructor for the past on and off five years down in Yuma. And we are looking forward to creating our business and bringing yet another wonderful attraction to Lake Havasu. And just kind of what Derek has mentioned as well, there is a code that we're looking to hopefully modify to make it safe and feasible for everybody to participate. But the one thing I've noticed between talking to some of you on the phone, as well as any individual that I've talked to here in the city, is that this is a very well-knit, well-loved community by the community members. And it's definitely something that we would be more honored to be a part of. So look for us in the air. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan Mulder. Sorry. Good evening, welcome.
How's it going? So I'm Jonathan Mulder. I'm actually Derek Bilkey's operations manager. And I come to you guys with the concern of the city code, as Derek mentioned previously. There's a couple of safety concerns with that for us operating out of the airport versus operating out of the Island Inn. A lot of that is because of the foot traffic and the amount of people that we are bringing in and out of the helicopter. On average, we are switching out riders every six to 10 minutes, depending on which flight option they do. So that's three different people walking across the airport or, you know, our designated spot on the Island Inn. With that, there's a safety concern with that much people or that many people crossing the airport in an active taxiway or near an open runway and whatnot. From an operations point, for our company is Optic Helicopters, we can't employ enough people to create a safe environment on the airport property to prevent people from walking across or, you know, getting into other aviation concerns. And also the safety of other businesses that are operating out there at the airport, being the FBO and the hang gliders and stuff that are going around town. So with that, our operations are a lot safer if we can operate out of our location on the island, in front of the Island Inn Hotel, because then we have a secure location, secure environment, where we're actually working on putting up fencing to control foot traffic, to prevent people from entering the helicopter area for safety reasons for the spinning blades and everything else. So I will hand it over to our next person. That should be Kylie.
Great, thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Tom Lee.
Thank you. My name is Tom Lee. I'm a freelance photographer here in Havasu and I service the boat industry as well as the off-road industry, both here in Havasu and across the country. I do a lot of work with Derek from Optic Helicopters. Certainly, his business has boosted my business and the availability of a helicopter here in Lake Havasu to be able to charter for the kind of work that I do has been huge. So basically, I'm here just to let you know that not only would his being left out at the airport and not being able to operate on the island be impactful to his business and probably detrimental to his business, it would also be detrimental to my business and several others that do similar work that I do. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Leslie Daniels.
Good evening. Good everybody. It's the first time I've ever spoke here. I'm here for my son, Cody Daniels, who owns apartment complex on McCollack. And I have unfortunately had to take over. He's very disabled, like I said, and I've had to take over everything. And I realized last night when I was paying the bills for, I opened the bill for the water and it was not only doubled, it doubled it in half for the sewer charges. And it was normally every month, it's $212 a month. And it went up to $525. And I thought there was a leak. So I went over to the water department over there and they had told me that there's an increase in the sewer for the commercial buildings. And it's, I was kind of in shock. So they told me to come over here and speak tonight on everybody's behalf that's having the same problem that I am having because it's very hard to keep the rents low with all this other charges behind it. I'm, we're just getting a tenant out of there that had lived there for eight years and destructed the place. And that's the last thing I needed to see was this bill that's normally $212 a month. I couldn't believe it. I guess it's $50 a unit per apartment, went up to that, a charge of $50 per apartment. So that was like $300 more a month now. So I'm hoping you guys take my speech into consideration and maybe reconsider the charges. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Knutson or maybe Anthony maybe can make contact with Leslie and have a conversation about her particular situation. Yeah, we'll be in touch. Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Lenny Thorell. I'm a resident here in Lake Havasu. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm not affiliated with Derek. I just got a free shirt. But I, I live on the island with my wife, Virginia. We live out at Sam's Beach Comer. And it's fantastic having the helicopters flying by and it's a lot of fun. Everyone always comes out, takes pictures and everything. We have a lot of friends in California that come out and visit every weekend. This is a vacation town. We think it's fantastic that there's actually, you know, a service now where you can actually get a ride on a helicopter. One of the first things people ask is, you know, "How do we get a ride on the helicopter?" and this and that and so forth. I know when he first started out and he was working out at the airport and so forth, a lot of people didn't want to make the drive out there and I understand that. You know, it's 10 miles. They've already driven 300 miles to get out here and they're just like, ah, whatever. As far as noise is concerned and so forth, I've never heard of anyone out there at all complaining. I don't know if you've all received any complaints at all or anything, but it's been great for us. What else was there? I had so many things I want to tell you guys. I just think that, you know, I know that there's another heliport here in town by the College Street Brewery. And it's like, why can't we just have another one out there? I mean, it's totally safe. There's nothing nearby there. It's in a vacant lot. They have cones all around. It seems like it's secure. I know they were talking about a fence. I mean, I just, as a small businessman, I, you know, realize the costs associated with having to get people to come out to the airport and then flying all the way back down to the lake to give them a ride and so forth. And maybe that doesn't mix with the business model. I just think it's a great idea and I think if you guys can maybe put on an agenda, you know, for later date or something, so we can talk about it more, I think it would be great. So I think it's really good that we have the service available here in Havasu now. And I just hope that you guys can put on the agenda and thank you for hearing me.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So Mr. Knutson, could we get something on the agenda to take a look at the code that these people this evening have been speaking about and bring it back in front of council for discussion? All right, great. Thank you. Yeah, so we'll bring that and address those concerns at a future meeting. Yes. Mr. Stansbury, if you could just state your name for the record?
Martin Stansbury, Lake Havasu citizen, real estate broker, property manager. I too got a couple of water bills that I'd like to discuss or at least talk about. I know there's been a lot of talk about workforce housing and how we're going to build our workforce housing. I have a nine-unit apartment building on Sandwood Drive. Usually runs me about $300 a month. Our usage went down 25% from last month. The bill was 326 last month. It's 514 this month. About a block down the street, I have a duplex at 2149 Sandwood. Last month it was $100. Our usage went down about 20%. The bill's $160. The tenants are going to pay this. And so if we're really truly going to try to do something about workforce housing, it seems like that we need to look at this real closely. Another thing is, I understand we paid over $100,000 to pay somebody to figure out and do a study on this, tell us how to raise the water rates. We have got to be more fiscally responsible with these taxpayer money. We got $500,000 going out to the PED. I can't figure out what we got in return for that. We're spending over a half a million dollars to draw drawings for a courthouse. I don't know how many thousand dollars an hour we're paying people to draw these things or how many tens of thousands of hours that they're budgeting for these drawings. And now $100,000 for a water study to raise the water rates to double on the lowest income earners in the city? Please, take care of our tax dollars. Got to be more fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so the water rate issue, there's going to be a $5.7 million decrease in property taxes as well. So there's, it's a full story that went through an 18-month process, but point well taken and we'll take a look at the multifamily rates. Yes, sir.
Hi all. My name is Donald. I'm a site manager for an out-of-state investor. Small development, five units. I also want to speak on this water bill thing. Five units, our previous bill was $141 a month. Recent bill was $279. That's 100% plus. My tenants are all elderly and on fixed income. It's difficult for a landlord to absorb that cost. Of course, he's going to pass it on to his tenants. Like this gentleman said, you want to keep affordable housing and Havasu withdraw people here. 100% increase is not only immoral, it's, how do you justify doubling it? I can understand a 20, 30% increase. My tenants are not getting My tenants are not getting a cost of living on their social security and all good conscience. It's difficult for me to go back to them and say, I'm going to raise your rent 50 bucks. That takes food out of the rice box. They might not be able to get the medications they need. This needs to be recalculated. It seems insane and absurd. A hundred plus increase. So I vented. I represented my boss in a good way and now you guys got to do the right thing.
Thank you. And Dom, what's your last name?
Troutman, like a fish.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and council, council member. I'm going to follow up on what or what is your job? Constable had to say, and by the way, you ought to marry Donald, Ronald McDonald. You're both awful happy. I'm going to talk about the courthouse again. The last time I mentioned that you voted on something, you didn't even, didn't even see what you're voting on. The last time I was here, you, the, they did a presentation. Mr. Lane says he couldn't vote on anything they showed. The concept of, I, I was watching thing about nine 11 and about they built a new tower in New York and they had all these architects made models of what their idea, what the new tower was going to look like. Well, we're not building a tower, but we are building a courthouse. And originally what they presented was a one courthouse and the judge says, we need two courthouses. They mentioned when they, the presentation about the bathrooms from the old gym they had. Well, they didn't mention about private bathrooms for the judges and the judges' chambers, which is very, very important. And they didn't show anything about a judge's space, the judge's office where you see on TV, they all go back to the office and have a conversation. I didn't see anything about the jury room where they go to confer about a trial. Oh, very important. What is a courtroom going to look like? Was it going to be made of plywood, going to be made of walnut, going to be made of oak? And are they going to have a decoration? What's it going to look like? Bear walls? You have some Lake Havasu decorations on the wall? I think this is very important. Well, I don't understand why you approved it without understanding more about it. And that's the end of my conversation, but we need to understand this more and get more from those architects.
And also just state your name for, for the record.
Don Wisdom.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom.
They all know me.
Yeah. So the, the courthouse, we didn't vote on anything because it was just space planning last time. So good points, but we were just planning space. So it's a, it's a multi-phased approach and yep, and we'll be doing all of those components. So
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we, I just want to clarify one thing that he had said. He said that the judge said we needed two courthouses. The judge said we needed two courtrooms, not two courthouses.
Big difference. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Jim Day. I'm a 37 year resident of Lake Havasu. Most of you know me. And I'm one of Havasu's biggest supporters. But like some other people here tonight, I not real happy with my water rate increase. I can live with the residential. I think it's fine. I think it's fair. I think it's equitable, but I also own a commercial building in downtown McCulloch. And my rate also more than doubled for this last month. And I've got to pass it on to my tenants whom I just renewed their leases without this increase. So now I got to go back and redo it, but I think we need to relook at this and come up with a better plan. Thank you guys for your service.
Thank you. Yes, just state your name for the record. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Mark Schleff. I'm the manager at Island Inn. Like Derek came up earlier and talked about the helicopter business he's running. I just wanted to come here today to say that we love him operating out from our property right there. It's the perfect area for, for it. I myself have done one of the tours and it's totally safe. They have it all worked out where it's very under, they know what they're doing. And it's a great time. My guests love it. We have guests. We have visitors too. It's very busy there. It's right by the London Bridge Beach. We have lots of people, visitors, my guests, everyone in the community who love going up in there and seeing the amazing views. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and bring it back at a future meeting and have a discussion how the code can align with that. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kylie Wengler. I'm a local Lake Havasu city resident and Optic Helicopters administrative manager. It is crucial that the city coding that negatively affects Optic Helicopters LLC be brought to the councils and communities' attention to address the current coding that does not permit aircraft within city limits. While I understand the origination of the city coding, I also believe that with all things, there comes a time to update and modify to meet current societal needs. Prior to being employed by Optic Helicopters, I'd always just known Havasu as the city viewable by boat, side by side or vehicles. My first time flying with Optic Helicopters opened my eyes to a beauty that I did not know was possible, one that is hidden unseen unless by air. Not to mention, this is my first time ever in a helicopter and what an incredible, incredible experience that was. We are doing an injustice to our locals and tourists by not highlighting this view and opportunity. While frying, while flying from the island in location and working full-time with Optic, we are asked countless times a day by tourists, where's a good place for dinner? Where's a good place to go look for shopping? Where's a good place to stay? Numerous questions that drive tourist funds to other local small businesses. This dialect does not happen when working from the airport, miles outside of the central area of town. Since moving the business from the Lake Havasu Municipal Airport to the island in location, Optic Helicopters was able to employ seven part-time local Lake Havasu residents as the increased business of the company made this possible. Although since the city coding was presented, that revoked us access to island location, we have had to move business back to the airport. In doing so, the lack of traction has now put those seven employees without work or paychecks for the last three weeks and counting. While seeing the small successes that this business venture has started to unveil from the island location, we had opened the doors and started to connect the channels to be able to offer a program for teens and youth alike to be able to learn about the aviation industry and offer a program that would bring more awareness to a job field that most are unaware or inexperienced enough not to know about. Since turning focused on how to be able to manage moving locations and the hurdles that come with that, we've had to pivot and pause this project until a later date. We believe that the success of Optic Helicopters is dependent on the island in location. It is at the center of our city, easily accessible to tourists and locals, and is imperative to the continued success of driving more revenue to other businesses within the city. It is detrimental to the continuation of our business and the employees that I manage that we be able to work with the city council and all departments needed to update this code to reflect the many benefits Optic Helicopters brings to the city itself and to our local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. If you just state your name for the
Oh, Kylie Wengler.
Oh yeah, we have your name. Yes. Yeah. Thank you, Kylie. Yeah.
My name is Cody Tuggle.
Cody, welcome.
I'm also here to request reconsideration on the code that requires Optic helicopters to move to the airport. It would be a huge boon to tourism in the area. I mean, it's the only service of its kind that exists in Havasu at the moment, and it has actually brought a not insignificant amount of short-term reservations to our Sam's Beach Comer just for people who are coming into town to see, you know, they do the helicopter rides, they do the boat tours and everything like that. And since most people in Havasu, myself included, don't even want to go to Walmart because it's too far. I think we can all agree that it's less a question about where he should operate out of and more a question of whether his business will be allowed to exist at all. And so I do ask for your reconsideration as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Yeah. So the, the process on this for the helicopter and for the skydiving, thank you, is we gave direction to the city staff to go take a look at the code and, and how the code would allow that. They'll bring it back to us in a public meeting. We'll have discussion on that, possible action, and then there'll be a subsequent meeting. So it, it does take time. It's a process, but everything we do in the public has to take that, that time. So it would be two meetings, but sir, did you want to address the council? Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Steve Martin. And I've been, spent a lot more time in helicopters than I ever actually wanted myself in the military. And one thing I always looked for was safety and hazards and all that. And I think the island in is probably about the safest place you could have a helicopter departing and taking off from as many times as it has to with customers. And it's, I can't think of a, a more safer location to have something like that than at the island. I represent the owners of the island in. And I think it'd be very good for Havasu to keep this going in that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Yeah, please. Yeah. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Mike Rackey. Recently, we've also noticed a water bill increase. My wife runs a shop down Rick Clark's Auto there. And our bill has gone up there from $80 a month to $300 a month. Now, we don't, we don't use water. Our water usage is for swamp coolers, keeping us cool. We don't have a lot of toilets. We don't use water down the sewer. Once in a while we drop, we drop, we clean our shops out and that goes down a special drain. It gets it out of the shop. It doesn't go in the sewer system. So that's quite an increase, you know, that, that there again runs back to the customers. We just have to charge the customers more, all of you. We work on a lot of your guys' cars. You're going to start paying for our bill. So that's something to remember. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Call to the public. Seeing now we'll close the in-person call to the public, but we did have several people send an email to the city clerk's office prior to the meeting. Ms. Williams, if you'd like to please read those into the record.
The first comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Hello, my name is Jaden Strickland and I'm a full-time airplane pilot and flight instructor based out of Lake Havasu Airport. My comments are to address Derek and Optic Helicopters situation with operating out of the island. I've been working while Derek has been operating on the airport and on the island. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Lake Havasu's airport operations, but the place gets busy. This, of course, is great for business, but becomes more challenging for safety. So much so as I won't work on the weekends because how chaotic it can get with everyone trying to come in and land at once. There is a cluster of propeller airplanes, private jets, helicopters, powered hang gliders, military aircraft and ground vehicles operating during the day. This, of course, creates a huge safety hazard, especially because Lake Havasu's airport is uncontrolled airport, meaning we don't have air traffic control directing us around. With Optic operating on the island, it helps alleviate the congestion at the airport, especially at peak hours when tourists usually want their rides. Derek is constantly coming in and out to drop passengers off and take them out again. When he's at the airport, not only does this take up time on the radio to coordinate with other pilots on how he's going to enter in, but it also creates one more collision hazard. On the island, he's well away from the airport and, and its air traffic at low altitudes, minimizing the hazards associated with mid-air collisions. I also want to speak on behalf of the safety of his passengers. It's much more hazardous for him to be operating at the airport because his passengers are not pilots, so they don't understand airport safety. This is especially important because his passengers have to cross a busy airport taxiway where propeller and jet airplanes are constantly crossing by. And while the passengers have an optic helicopter escort with them, it again creates one more hazard when it comes to mitigating risk. At the island, on the other hand, it's only the helicopter they have to worry about. Therefore, improving the safety of passengers and limiting the liability for everyone involved. I would just like to reiterate as a full-time Havasu flight instructor, I believe it's in the best interest of safety for myself and my students as well as, as well as Derek and Optic Helicopters passengers that they operate out of the island and not at the airport. Not to mention, they get much more business over there, meaning more tourist interest in Havasu. Submitted by Jaden Strickland. The next comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of comment for city council. Dear council members, for about a year, maybe longer, I have been driving past a nice fire truck that is parked behind outside Station Four. Parking a valuable piece of fire equipment outdoors will quickly fade, damage and render it inoperable. Do we have so much extra money and equipment? We can just let it go to waste. It makes me wonder how many other pieces of property there are around town that are not being cared for the way they should. Submitted by Doug Keltenberg. The next comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of Optic Helicopters amended letter to whom it may best concern regarding Agenda Five call to the public. My name is Matt Mitchell. I am a frequent visitor to Lake Havasu City as well as a certified FAA commercial helicopter pilot. I first came in contact with Optic helicopters when I saw them flying out on the island. Optic helicopters meets all safety requirements with the FAA and has shown me numerous breathtaking views of Havasu from a perspective only doable by aircraft. Not allowing Optic to fly from the island in location would be doing a major disservice to your tourist community. It opens the doors to so many other local small businesses in way of referrals, as well as introduces the beauty of the lake in a kind, in a one of a kind way. I highly encourage all council members to take a flight and be able to see why this location is so critical to the tourism industry as well as Optic helicopters. Submitted by Matt Mitchell. The next comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of call to the public, Optic helicopters. Hello, my husband and I are Lenny and Ginger Thorell. We are semi-retired real estate investors. We have been full-time residents living on the island in Lake Havasu for seven years. We have had the luxury of enjoying rides from Optic helicopters a few times. Having something like Optic helicopter tours on the island, I feel is great for both tourists and locals and benefits many people. Living on the island ourselves, the convenience of getting to the helicopter and getting a ride is so easy. Unlike a trip all the way out to the airport. Since many tourists spend a lot of their time in the channel and stay at hotels close to or on the island, it is convenient for them to catch a ride on a golf court, golf cart or even walk right to the helicopter. After being in the sun all day, this is much safer than driving all the way out to the airport. This will bring business to the island, restaurants, hotels, shops, rentals and more. Who wouldn't want to book a hotel close to the helicopter or get a bite after a ride? I would encourage anyone to take a tour and see our beautiful lake from another perspective and it would only be right over the bridge to get there. And let's not forget that Optic helicopter tours is also a small business in our community and worthy of being supported. Having them more centrally located helps them out as a business as well. We support changing the city code to allow Optic helicopters to operate on the island. Submitted by Lenny and Ginger Thorell. The next comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of call to the public, Agenda Item Number Five. I believe it is necessary for Optic helicopters to operate on the island. A majority of the tourism traffic is on the island. As a professional jet skier in town, I have many of my tourist training clients and fellow competition riders who come and keep their hotel, travel and entertainment on or around the island. Part of my hosting, part of hosting my clients is getting them on a tour with Optic helicopters to see the town and continue to spend money in and around the center of our town. On a near 90% ratio, when I mentioned to my clients the need to go to the airport, they dropped their interest because of the distance from their target location. Optic helicopters runs a safe, professional, convenient operation, providing more perspective of our great town and its amenities to more people. Thank you for your time and consideration. Submitted by Mark Gomez. The next comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of Derek Bilkey's city council meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Williams, if, if I may, Mr. Schleff spoke at call to the public in person, so we have that on file. So if we could go to the, the next one. Sorry to, to throw you off.
That's okay. The next last comment was received on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 with a subject line of call to the public. To whom it best concerns, my name is Brant Page. I am the local Lake Havasu city resident, small business owner and filmmaker. I've gone on countless flights with Optic helicopters and believe that the island in location is so desperately needed. Prior to having to uproot the business to the airport, I was able to work part-time with Optic and assist with the weekend shifts down at the island. and assist with the weekend shifts down at the island location. Now, since relocation, I have been temporarily without work as the manpower is not needed. The island location is the heartbeat for tourism and a location that creates a need for local employment. I urge the city council to listen to our voices and work with optic in changing the city coding. Sincerely, Brant Page.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our call to the public. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Like to make a motion to accept consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements and the city manager report. Item seven point one is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and three alternate members. And Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov.
Thank you. Item seven point two is the city managers' report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Feels like there's a bit of an echo there. Does that sound okay? Okay. So let's begin this evening's managers' report with an update of what happened over the weekend. As Christine indicated earlier, the Lake Havasu City community united just last Saturday to commemorate the twentieth anniversary of the lives lost in the attack, the attacks of the World Trade Center site, Pentagon and aboard Flight Ninety-three on September eleventh, two thousand one. We remember and we will never forget. I thank you to the nine eleven committee for coordinating and bringing this event to us each year. Mayor Sheehy reclaimed September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week in Lake Havasu City. September seventeenth marks the two hundred and thirty-fourth anniversary of the drafting drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Featured in the photo are members of the Constitutional Week Committee from the local Daughters of the American Revolution Organization. From left to right, you'll see Sharon Eaton, Bonnie Humphrey, of course, Mayor Sheehy, then Chapter Regent Saligini, Johnny Shehan and Deanna Beaver. Lake Havasu City, we have many openings for positions for both full-time and part-time. Our full-time positions include include benefits. If you are interested in joining our team and using your talents, please visit our website at LHCaz.gov and search for career opportunities to to apply. The positions are listed on the screen and and include opportunities in our Fire Department, Police Department, Development Services, HR, Public Works, IT and our Parks and Recreation Departments. Our next coffee with the mayor and city manager will be held on Friday, October first at eight thirty AM and will be underneath the London Bridge for the month of October. This meeting kicks off the many celebrations scheduled in the month of October for the golden anniversary month of the London Bridge. All residents are encouraged to attend and to express any issues, concerns or questions. On October tenth, nineteen seventy-one, after three years of reconstruction, the London Bridge was rededicated with a vibrant celebration still remembered by our longtime residents. On Thursday, October twenty-eighth, this year at four PM at the stage under the London Bridge, the city will celebrate the golden anniversary of the dedication of the London Bridge. It's fifty years. The whole community is invited to attend this momentous occasion. For more information about updates and calendar events for the entire month, please visit GoldLakeHavasu.com. And I believe we have upwards of twenty-five events scheduled for October this year in a celebration of the golden anniversary of the bridge. Just real briefly, I know we all know the the history, but you know, as the story goes, the bridge spanning the Bridgewater Channel was built one hundred and ninety years ago, back in eighteen thirty-one. Due to a heavy increase in vehicle traffic, the bridge began sinking into the River Thames. So the city of London had it dismantled and sold it at auction in nineteen sixty-seven. Robert P. McCulloch purchased the bridge for two point four million dollars at auction. The bridge was shipped in sections across the Atlantic Ocean and through the Panama Canal, and the first section arrived at the Port of Los Angeles on July fifth, nineteen sixty-eight. From there, these sections were transported overland to Lake Havasu City, thus becoming the vibrant, thriving city we all know as Lake Havasu City today. And fifty years ago in October is when it was opened. And lastly, my my update in terms of COVID numbers. The information, of course, is always provided by by Mojave County Public Health Department, and the numbers are as of today, September fourteenth. There have been two hundred and seventy-three new cases since my last report at the last council meeting, and you can see the breakdown month by month in the graphics shown above. Currently, there are one hundred and twenty-one active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu. And as always, a reminder for us all is be smart, be diligent and please support one another. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, item eight on the agenda is public hearings. Start with eight point one is introduce ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve sixty-six declaring the document entitled Amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title Eleven to add chapter eleven point one zero, construction within the public rights of way, location and relocation of facilities in the public rights of way, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, a public record in amending the city code by adopting by reference amendments to Title Eleven to add chapter eleven point ten. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, mayor and council. As mentioned, this is an item to introduce a proposed ordinance to add a new chapter to the city code that would contain the requirements necessary to obtain a permit to do work in the city's right-of-way or to locate or relocate facilities within the city's rights-of-way. A permit or some other permission is required to perform construction within the rights-of-way or to locate or relocate facilities in the rights-of-way. The rights-of-way consists of the property that's dedicated for public roadways or other public uses. Many providers utilize the right-of-ways to place their equipment necessary to transmit their services, such as gas, electric, cable and internet. Facilities may include things like a pole or a line or a box or other similar types of equipment. The proposed chapter goes into greater detail of the requirements and expectations from the city for someone to do construction within our rights-of-way. It lists what's necessary when submitting an application and then the responsibilities of the applicant, all the way from traffic control to restoration of pavement. The amendments also cover pedestrian and traffic safety measures, as well as if there's any conflict or interference with city facilities and projects, what the process would be to handle those. It's important to have consistent and clear processes for the type of construction in our rights-of-way. And so city staff recommends that you introduce this ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions that may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Gary, from any members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I have several questions. Bear with me, it's going to be a long night, I can tell. First off, I'm thinking this is in conjunction with the new broadband services and trying to expedite. I know that, no. You're not.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, sorry, I guess you're reacting to my shaking of my head. Yeah, so in terms of the announcement by Allo Communications, they are a video service provider and will be under, I mean, in terms of the ability to access right-of-ways, that some of the rules in here will apply to that situation. But it's not a reaction to the Allo Communications announcement. You'll see at a forthcoming council meeting that there will be a a user agreement that will come forward that that'll dictate much of that process.
Okay, after, that's what I thought it was for. I know that for at least six months, we've had requests for a licensing agreement or some agreements with broadband. And I just get this and I start diving into it along with everything else that's going on. And I have a lot of questions and so do other people that have been dealing with it. We are acting as if, I feel that this is put into place to make jobs easier and more efficient for the providers that want to be in these right-of-ways. And all it is, is another level of confusion. I mean, letters of credits of cost of right-of-ways, no indication of waiving fees to support rapid broadband deployment. Will there be an expedited permit processes for those? Any deviation from requirements will be a direction of the city, fairness to competitors. There does not seem to be notification systems regarding joint trenching. Joint trenching specifications are missing. Is this document being put in place so that providers only have to obtain obtain a single approval? Or do they have to get an approval for every individual home that they want to attach to? Required, and this is a must and it's not on there. They should all be required to have an Arizona contractor's license for doing any work in right-of-ways for permits. That's not on there. Seems that this is not a broadband plan. I know it's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be a right-of-way plan, but if we're using this plan to help with the Broadway plant, broadband plan, I'm very concerned that we need to table this and have further discussion and there you have it.
Yes, that's a lot of questions. I lost track, so I'm sure Ms. Gary, not to put words in her mouth, but so what this is, is I believe it's to give certainty to people that are going to do works, work in our right-of-way, so broadband or otherwise. And and this outlines that. So when they go get, when somebody goes to permit to do work in the right-of-way, what's that process? That's, Ms. Gary, if you could maybe add some light to that.
Yes, and so the purpose of this is just to provide more detail within the city code. Currently, there are a handful of sections in the city code, and that's the next item that we'll discuss if this is introduced. And it's extremely vague. It doesn't really provide any information. Everything that's contained in here isn't necessarily something that's new. It's just putting down into the code currently what the process is, what's required, what the expectations are. So when somebody comes and they want to do work within the right-of-way or locate or relocate a facility within the right-of-way, they know and everybody knows, here are the rules, here's what's expected of you, and this will be the process moving forward.
And I understand that, but if I'm that person that wants to work in that right-of-way, I don't even want to work in your right-of-way because you even, it holds me accountable for a lot of things that says it's under the direction of the city staff to unders, to allow it or not allow it, how much it's going to cost me. It even starts out like with the insurance to permit. City may require evidence of general liability insurance and it doesn't even, and they will determine the cost of what our insurance needs to be prior to us even pulling a permit. And I also, when I was going through the new fees, there was a lot of increased fees on some of these right-of-ways too, which is going to be the next thing we get to all address tonight. Aren't we excited? But I'm really concerned that we haven't done our due diligence. I know this has been sitting impending for a very long time, maybe not just this, but the discussion of broadband coming here and what we can do to make it simple and regulation-free. And back to what I keep saying over and over is a cookie cutter cutter plan that if I'm a businessperson, I'm coming here to spend fifty million dollars. Please don't just say, well, we'll tell you what it is later or we'll do this later. And we can change that anytime and we can demand you get it done in this certain period of time, or we can demand you to remove your facility on your cost. I mean, it is, I read through the whole thing along with all those rate studies again, and I was disappointed.
So what are you disappointed in? So what is it that we can do to have the conversation? What what are you concerned by?
Kinda, yeah, we need to tighten it up so that we need to make it more streamlined and easier.
Conversation, so starting on page two, letter E.
I'm asking for staff to go back, let's take a look at it and maybe have conversations with people on this. I mean, unless you want to sit here tonight and we'll just line item through it all.
Yeah, that's our role. Yeah, so this is here presented, so if the council wants to move forward with with this introduction, the things that are that you have concerns with.
I told you a bunch of the things I have concern with. Can we motion to postpone this until, or do a work session on what might be better? Because we're, look what we did with the water stuff. We need to do a little more work with this. So I don't want to just sit here today and cross it all out with you. I, you know, I've got, you know.
So we go, we notify for a public hearing. We introduce an ordinance and then at the next subsequent meeting will bring forth any changes to to that introduction that staff has. So if there's no direction for for that, so that the ordinance is in front of us, the the amendments are in front of us and the ones that you have concern with, I was trying to follow with the variety of things.
Would you like me to just forward my note? Okay, let's do this. Letters of credits of cost to be in the right-of-way. I do not see anywhere costs are discussed. Is a cost per foot or row per foot? And I think I saw that on the new, the other side, the fees. I think it's fifty dollars per running foot or few, but for, but just to say, let, there's no cost per running.
And what pages is that on?
I don't have pages. I just had to find it down to notes because it was so big.
As far as like fees being paid for per right-of-way, if you're placing something right, that's totally separate from anything that's contained in here. A letter of credit would be if they're performing construction within the right-of-way, they need to provide to us some security with respect to the improvements or the work that they're doing. So that's where the letter of credit comes in, that's where the insurance requirements come in. So depending on what it is exactly that they're doing, we do have standard insurance requirements. However, if it happens to be something that's more dangerous or risky than something that's just a normal cut and patch, it goes through our risk, it goes through our risk pool. They make a determination of whether or not we should be charging more insurance or less insurance. So I mean, it's not so much of a question and it's not arbitrary, but it really does depend on the circumstance of what they're submitting to us in their application of how those things are determined.
Joint trenches agreement, you have some stuff in there. There was a really great dig-once practices that make a lot of sense. And ADOT is acquiring them and ours seem to be a little different than that.
As far as joint trenching, so that is something that is new to Lake Havasu City. I know that our Public Works Department did a ton of research. They looked out to see what's currently going on. That's why you see the reference into MEG in there. So if somebody came in and it was appropriate for us to do joint trenching or to require joint trenching, we have those specifications that we would turn to. So those are trusted, tried and trusted specifications. So those are, those are all there. We're referencing to those. So it is something that anybody coming in to do something, that type of work here that that does, that would be familiar with that.
Okay. Based on broadband, because they're going to be in your right-of-way, are we doing anything to expedite the permitting process for them or?
We would treat anybody who comes in with an application the same. And and that's a, that's a legal requirement. We're not going to treat anybody differently. We're going to process as quickly as we can anything that comes in based on the resources that we have. But as far as, we didn't, if there's going to be something separate that's specifically related to broadband, that'll be a separate discussion than this right-of-way ordinance. This right-of-way ordinance is for anybody coming in to do work within our right-of-way. They're all going to be treated the same. This is the process. This is what's required by the federal government and this is why we're putting it into place.
Any deviations from requirements will be at the discretion of the city. Again, that, is that a fairness and competitor competition thing? I feel then it's like we're going back to the city staff saying, oh, I'll make the decisions on everything. I just, I like things really crystal clear. And that's how we get in trouble.
No, in in, when we're doing construction, when you're doing work, you run upon things. So you you run into something and some call needs to be made and that's where the city engineer and the Public Works Department comes in. They go out and assess if a deviation is necessary, then then that's a determination that's made. There has to be some some form of flexibility in there to be able to accomplish the goals.
Okay, then if, can we get better processes in place just for the timeframes? When it says if you don't have something done in a timely manner, it could end up costing you. There just seems like, I wish we could just go through it and clean it up a little bit, that's all, but I don't, I guess I'm not.
We've had any complaints about our right-of-way process or the timeliness of it.
Oh, no, we have. I mean.
I mean, I guess I don't have anything specific. If there's something specific that we can address, I'm happy to to try to draft that in there.
And it does align with the fees too. The, some of these fees, especially on broadband, have went up quite a bit. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm on public record saying that I think we're rushing this through.
And and I just want to note, just so council understands, I mean, we have been working on this for a considerable amount of time. City staff has spent a lot of time researching, working with other cities. We worked with a consultant to put this together, so I don't feel that we're rushing. But I mean, certainly if there are ways that we can improve in and there's things that we need to address, we're absolutely open to do that.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. And I read.
And I read through this thing as well, and our job here is to protect the citizens of this community and the infrastructure that we have here. So just a couple of things, I was taking some notes on what Ms. Campbell had to say. And if I may, in the insurance that we require, we require that insurance so that all these people are protected. So all the money that they've spent on infrastructure is protected. Those people that are coming into the city to work have to have insurance in case something happens. What if a child rides his bike and falls into the trench that they have? There has to be insurance. Removing equipment, if they abandon equipment on the side of the road because all of a sudden their project is no longer feasible, we have to have a mechanism in place that we can remove their equipment. And the deviation you were talking about at the discretion of the city, I absolutely agree that the city has to have that ability. We don't want people saying, well, we just hit a boulder, so we're going to deviate, and we're going to cut into this person's property and then deviate back over this. It's going to be up to the city as to how well we can deviate. And I've read this document, and I think it protects the city, and it gives the people that are coming into the city a clear path as to the kind of work, if they're going to come in here and do work, this is what it takes. And it doesn't matter whether they're broadband, it doesn't matter whether they're another internet company, a natural gas company, cellular company, anything that's going to come in here, they're going to dig up our roads and our right of ways. These are the plans that they have to follow. So I myself, I think they did a great job on it, and that's, that's just my opinion.
And I agree. I'm in the asphalt and concrete business. We went and fixed that patch out there because nobody else would touch it because we wanted to make sure it was perfect. So I understand all that, and I don't need to be told that I don't understand general liability because I clearly do understand general liability. Obviously, we do bonding for everything, and we're still here after all these years taking care of it. But what I'm trying to say is, if you're trying to have things, you're asking me to just pull up a bond based on what you guys think. So costs in place, I'll go, and I think it is, I think I already know that cost, that was really actually a question, was the cost, the right of way cost was $50 per square, I mean, sorry, $50, that's not on that, but it'd be on our other side, the other funding point. The, the cost that we're going to have, we're going to be doing another sheet on all of our fees that are going up, including this. So these do parallel very closely together, and there's just a lot of questions out there for how much is this going to cost? What's the timeframe that I have to do it in? Even with the difficult manner of getting workforce, everybody knows that. We know how difficult these patches are. We know how much street and traffic control it takes, is what I'm trying to say. So I'm not asking these questions because I'm not educated about how to do patchworks and underground and right of way jobs. I do. I'm asking for the city to not make it so difficult for broadband to come through that they're not going to get through this permit pass, process for five years, when generally it's a pretty darn easy thing to do. It's not difficult to go through a right of way and do what you need to do. And absolutely, who's ever touching it would have to put it back into place and be responsible for it. But one thing here said, if you damage, if you replace the road, you could be responsible for replacing that road five years later.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Dolan.
That last comment I do agree with. They should be replacing it five years later if it's as bad as it was when they put it down. I've sat, I brought it up at the meet, few meetings ago that I asked that this come in front of us. I am so disappointed with our utility companies. They do a horrible job, horrible job out there. And I know there's been areas of the town where we have had to pay to go back to fix their temporary job because they don't do it. And I don't think it's the contractor's fault. I think if they hire a good contractor, it's going to get done right. But I mean, look what happened on Akoma here. Third time's a charm to do that. Can I, and can I, do I know for sure that they paid for that and we did not pay to have that fixed those three times? Good, because I think it's ridiculous. And I've asked, you know, in meetings I've had with the city managers, I've asked that we do get tougher on some of these right of ways that, you know, we talk about our streets and how horrible they are, and we just let these companies come in, and without thinking, they cut up right where the tire mark is on a busy road and cut it up and just, and so I do thank the city manager. I know we've, we've applied staff to it to go out and check and make sure that they're actually doing it. And like I said, Akoma was a pretty obvious one, but I mean, even just the cuts that Unisource, for example, cuts across the street, they put a temporary fix in, and the next thing you know, big, you know, the water comes in on a monsoon and just rips that road up. And, you know, so I mean, I am appreciative that we are cracking down on them. And like I said, I do, I do think we need to have high standards out there, and I think we'll get those quality contractors that will do it. And I agree with you, you know, but I do think that we need to be a little bit tougher and not just let anybody cut into our roads and then not fix them, you know, which I think has been a major issue for like the last 10 or 15 years. Anybody can drive around town and see all these horrible patches we have. So I, I, I like the directions it's gone in. I have not read every single word of it, but what I've reviewed and talked to the city manager and the city attorney, I like the direction we're going in. And, you know, broadband is a hard thing. We don't know exactly what's coming, but I think like with anything else, we put it in place, we can make adjustments as needed. There's two things we voted on in the past. It sounds like tonight's going to be, may come back to us in the future. Great, we get an opportunity to fix it once the water settles, and we know what works or what doesn't work. So I'm, I'm okay with this the way it is now. I think, like I said, when it comes to broadband, I think we're going to have to work and figure it out. Maybe we have to make some changes when, I mean, if somebody's going to truly come in, invest 50 to 100, 200 million dollars in our town, you know, we got to wait till that's here and know what that is before we can kind of work around it. It's hard to work around it before it gets here, so just my thoughts.
I totally agree that the patches in this community are terrible, and it was our company that went and fixed that one because it was a mess. And I'm not trying to plug them, but they're awesome. But the point is, it's absolutely, we have to hold these contractors accountable 100%. I'm just saying that there's a lot of hoops here. Maybe we could take it in another direction, go ahead and pass this one the way it is, and then maybe we can look at a broadband infrastructure right of way agreement that might look a little bit different than this. That's an option.
Yeah, and then just for clarification, Councilmember Campbell, when you had mentioned that the company would be responsible for the asphalt patches five years later, what the, in the definition, it's for ex-fation happening when a brand-new concrete that we paid for is five years new, then they have to do it to these specifications so that we don't have the issue that happened on Akoma. So this is strengthening to make sure that those right of way. So it's not that the contractor's responsible for five years, they're responsible to have it in the standards that are appropriate, but they can't just patch into our brand-new asphalt if we redo McCulloch, for example, this year. That would be five years new, and they would have certain different specifications to ensure they put it back, is how that reads. So any other comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Maybe the city manager can explain to us a little bit too, and our conversations we've had, and some of the things we talk about doing as a council as a whole, we are reminded that our state government has a lot of control, and even though it is Republican-led, they are very much, don't think we should have public control in a lot of areas, which is completely the opposite of what the party platform is. But they do decide that a lot of decisions need to be made in Phoenix at the Maricopa level and not the, like Havasu level. So I know when we were talking about this, well, why don't we do that? Why don't we do that? Well, we're literally limited with what we can do due to state mandates.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, the conversation we had earlier on that regard was talking about franchise agreements for internet service providers that provide like video services, right? Several, several years ago, the cities across Arizona had the ability to negotiate a franchise agreement. Mayor Shee talks a lot about the, the previous service levels that we received here as customers in Lake Havasu City of Suddenlink, for example, was our ability to mandate customer service centers that are, or call centers that are, that are in Havasu. The ability to make sure that we have access to the government channel and be able to broadcast those things. We also had the ability to identify some of the give and take. So with their access to our right of way, we are asking for this in return. 2016, 15, 16, somewhere in that timeframe, the legislature took away the city's abilities across the state to negotiate a franchise agreement with a video service company such as Suddenlink or ALO or other companies that are out there. So we don't, no longer have that ability to do just that. So when we bring the user agreement, user license before the council in future meetings for consideration, it'll be literally a format that is dictated by state statute. The, we put the date in, they sign it, we sign it, and, and we're done. There's no ability to negotiate whatsoever. So we talk a lot about, off topic real quick, but along the same lines, we talk about what the state did with short-term rentals. They took away our ability to manage that, our programs here in Lake Havasu City, and it's a similar fashion when it comes to the franchise agreements. So it's a little bit off topic in terms of what was occurring here. In terms of this ordinance that's before council, it is the accumulation of the existing processes that we have in place already, but they're back of the napkin. There, there is no formalized process that we can take and hand off, that's this comprehensive anyway, that we can take and hand off to, to a Unisource or to a utility company or to a broadband company or to any company that wants to do work within our right of way. We need to make sure that the integrity of our roads are in place, that when they cut into the road, that it's put back into place with the same level of, of condition than when they, when they started. And this process allows us to do just that. So, so we'll have, you know, a couple of things at place in terms of what type of utility you are, but this, but I'm sure that answers your question, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
I appreciate it. And it's also for, I think, for the people at home to understand that, but also too, we're creating a working draft that we can use, but like I said, it's not locked in stone. We can make changes to it in the future as things come up, and we can stay ahead of things as well, so.
Well, my bottom, last one here, if, if any other thing else is heard, they should be required to have a valid Arizona contractor's license for anyone doing work in the right of ways slash permits. This should be mandatory. It shouldn't be kind of maybe, because we have a lot of fly-by-nighters that come in here and do these patches all over this community, and then they're gone. And lucky for us, then somebody has to hire us to come and fix those patches. So if, I'm not saying I want all the work, I'm saying I want to save the tax dollars, taxpayers' money, because when you get somebody that's a fly-by-nighter, because, and they don't even have an Arizona license, and they're doing these patches. So I'm not saying a city is doing it or we're doing this, but if Suddenlink or somebody else comes through and they can get somebody to come through and just hit a bunch of their patches up, and I'm not saying Suddenlink ever did that, but I'm just using that as an example. We have fixed a lot of bad asphalt that the city sometimes just pays us for to, because it was a horrible job, and these guys are never to be seen again, they don't even have like insurance, nothing. So can, if I get that in there?
Yeah, so Ms. Gary, I agree with Councilmember Campbell on adding that language that they're going to be registered Arizona contractors. Is that something that is permissible by law to include in this document?
We can look into that, and then add that in if it's appropriate for the adoption.
Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, perfect. All right, any final comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any further discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number 21-1266 declaring the document entitled Amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title 11 to Add Chapter 11.1: Construction Within Public Right Of Ways, Location and Relocation of Facilities in Public Right Of Ways, September 28, 2021, A Public Record, and Amending the City Code by Adopting by Reference Amendments to Title 11 to Add a Chapter 11.10.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is introduce ordinance number 21-1265, amending city code chapter 9.16, offenses relating to property, to repeal sections 9.16.180, 9.16.190, and 9.16.200, and 9.16.210 regarding work in the public right of way, and revise and renumber sections 9.16.220 and 9.16.230. Ms. Gary?
Mayor and council, this is a companion to the last item. As I mentioned, there are a handful of current city codes that relate to work in the right of way that will need to be repealed and amended if the chapter, a new chapter 11.10 is adopted. And so this is the ordinance to introduce. We're getting rid of a couple sections that just talk about work in the right of way permit, and then the standard specifications and notice and fees, which are all included in what was introduced in the last item, and then just renumbering the last two remaining sections and fixing a reference to what would be an old city code reference if the new ones are adopted. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Gary, on this companion item? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any conversation or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yes, please, Councilmember Lane.
I move to introduce ordinance number 21-1265 to amend city code chapter 9.16.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, item 8.3 is introduce ordinance number 21-1269, amending the Lake Havasu City Code Section 3.20.040, Schedule of Fees and Service Charges to Update Costs Recovered. Good evening, Ms. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Annually, the city goes through a process where we review the fees and charges that we currently have in place. We have an annual review, but a couple of years ago, council had requested that perhaps the changes to the fees not occur every single year, but we could track them and perhaps increase fees every other year or so. It has been since, we did not have any increases last year, and it has been since 2018 since we did a formal review of all the fees and charges. So this year, Sandy McCormick, one of our senior accountants, took the lead on this. She's our fee queen, and she's here for any technical questions. And also, the departments worked very hard on these and spent a lot of time in the details in coming up with what services they provide and the costs associated with providing that service. This year, we again did that very detailed review by all the departments. Normally, if we don't do a full review, we will apply CPI and make our recommendations based upon those changes in CPI. So through that process, each of the departments looked at these services that they provide, and they broke those services down into enough detail that we could determine what the cost for providing that service is on a per-unit basis. And that's where the dollar amounts come from, associated with the master fee schedule. It combines, the master fee schedule is the result of applying the, the methodologies listed in the ordinance to the actual fees in order to come up with the final fee. So if we have a fee that we think, usually in Parks and Rec, it's very common to have a fee that has a 50% cost recovery, sometimes even less, then that 50% would get applied to the actual cost that was estimated, and that it would be the fee that we are proposing to council on the master schedule. So again, the ordinance reflects the changes that are being made in the, either the recovery in the method or in the percentage. The first part, the small section at the beginning of the ordinance, shows what's being deleted, and the ones in, that are listed in the rest of the ordinance indicate items that were changed. So if there's an item on the current, in the current code that's not listed here, it means that there's no change in that ordinance section being proposed by this process. This kicks off the review period for fees and charges. The adoption for the ordinance would not, is not scheduled to occur until November. And this gives us plenty of time to hopefully receive comments and input from the public as they review the charges, so that we can do further research if necessary, or take a look at our calculations, or perhaps even perform some, some market studies. We do informal market studies for some of the fees to help us determine what the, we would recommend to council for a recovery rate. So that's also taken into consideration. We did include all of the increases in staff costs associated with the position analysis that is included and reflected in these numbers, so that contributes to a portion of, of the increase. that is included and reflected in these numbers, so that contributes to a portion of the increase. Many of the fees you will see are actually not changing at all, according to the master fee schedule, and some fees are being decreased. And then there are other fees that show slight increase, and the difference column indicated on the master fee schedule is probably the quickest way to reference the change of a particular fee. So with that, I want to thank Sandy and Allison Blum for working on this so diligently and taking the lead, and especially thank the departments for working so hard on the details that actually led to the calculations made by the finance staff. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Olson?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I don't know why anything's going up. My government tells me there's no inflation, so I think everything's fine. There's nothing to worry about. Inflation's fine, so. No, I think we see it every day in our normal life and business and everything. Things are going up, and I think as a city, definitely we have to stay ahead of it the best we can. As we know, we are running a, trying to run a successful nonprofit and stay in the black to the best of our ability. So the stuff I've reviewed, there are increases and some decreases, but I feel fine about it, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Campbell?
I guess my fee proportion isn't as bad as I thought. Here we go. Item, it's a new item, it's S-703. It's called a default fee. Default for Civil Traffic Violations, Water Violations, and Criminal Local Ordinances. Additional $50.
Campbell, do you have a page number that you could reference for us? Maybe at the bottom, maybe if you scroll up a little bit?
This is kind, I, this is different. I guess I can go back.
And that sounds like it could be a fee associated with the municipal court?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, do you see, I, I will do it differently next time. I will mark all my pages, but I usually just do it this way. Yes, my question, my only question or concern to that is default for civil traffic violations, water violations, and criminal local ordinances, which means default, which I understand that there should be a fee on that, but sometimes when people get in the system, they get stuck, and if they keep on getting default fees on top of fees, sometimes that can be a problem. The $50, if somebody can just, give me some more information on it, that would be great.
Judge Colley has an answer for that.
Mayor and council, just for reference, it's page 34.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Actually, that stills my thunder from the next item, because we're going to talk about this the next item. But basically, the courts has been charging a suspension fee of $50 for, as long as I can remember, all the courts in the state of Arizona. The suspension fee, because of some changes in the statute, has now been shifted over to a default fee. So it's a type of cost recovery, that when somebody decides that they're not going to address an issue before the court, there are costs associated with that. If they come and address the issue, then there aren't those costs associated. And so this is a kind of a cost recovery mechanism for what we do. Would also note for the record that in the verbiage there, it is a may, and so if the court, for whatever reason, feels like it should not be assessed, then it doesn't have to be assessed.
Thank you. You answered that perfectly. That makes a lot of sense to me now. Firework permits, S-369, I noticed those decreased, and I know we get so many complaints about fireworks in the community, I'm not saying ban them or anything, but I'm just wondering why those decreased.
Yeah, Chief Plafus?
Yeah, the chief would have the more detailed information associated with the changes.
The first person that gets to the page would be good to announce it for us all.
All right, it's a new girl thing. I'll definitely, I'll figure it all out next time. I'll do better at this.
You know, I don't have the page at hand, but I remember going over the fee structure, and what we did is we looked at who was involved in the inspections. So what we did was take the individuals that weren't involved in the inspections and just removed them, so that's where you probably see the decrease in cost.
Yeah, page 32 for...
Thank you, Mayor. He's now my assistant.
Did I answer your question, councilmember?
Beautifully, thank you.
Did you have any other questions? Councilmember Campbell?
One more question. For the water meters and service line installation, there is a discrepancy that changed. I can see that. What page, Mayor?
I'm working.
It says that three-quarter meter, $1,800, one inch, 1971, that makes sense to me. Then there was, it used to be zero, but now the one and a half goes to 4,722. The two goes to 5,416. The four goes back down to 4,040, and then the six jumps all the way, the six-inch water meter that's costing everybody a bunch of money too, does jump up to 9,000, and then eight, so.
Page 10.
Page 10.
Page 10, thank you. I guess I was bouncing all over the place with these, wasn't I? Just a question on what does that mean and why some water meters cost for permit or don't seem to be going up the way?
The bottom section where you show the $4,040, the $9,090, those are deposits. Those aren't the actual fees. The fee is calculated based on the actual cost. Those are deposits they would collect prior to installing a meter of that size.
Okay, so what would the meter of that size, so that's a, where do we find out the meter of that size? Where do we find out how to?
It would be the actual cost, so they would have to do what we call a job cost work order summary. They prepare it, it's got all the staff time, the labor costs, the material costs, everything on it, and then it's billed out from there.
Okay, and you guys recently just did that for me too on Palomino, so I understand that. And so the top ones up here, the three-quarter, what does this mean by previously billed actual costs? Do you see that one above?
Yes, so that was one that they used to fill out a job cost work order summary every single time they had one of those jobs. For efficiency purposes, they did all the calculations. Now, we were able to incorporate it in, and now we have a flat fee that we could charge for those.
I understand, thank you. That would have saved us a lot of time.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the page 22 on the birthday party rentals in the pool rental swim team. The, we're raising it quite a bit from the current fee for the birthday parties from 85 to 150, and could Mr. Keen come up? Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, so we usually, those birthday parties are only on the weekends, correct?
Correct.
And we're pretty full right now, right?
Yes.
Is that the reason why we're raising that? Because that's a big jump for families, 85.
It is a big jump. We're actually doubling the number of kids they're allowed to bring, so it's an actual decrease in, if you go cost per child.
Okay, so what if they only bring 10?
Then what we would encourage them to do is they can kind of set up a space outside the party area.
Okay, okay. And then on the swim team, the same thing that we raised at $34 a month, right? We're increasing it?
Is that on page 22?
The same page, 22, S-355.
I'm sorry.
The rental pool for the swim team?
It's the second one from the bottom.
It's right underneath.
Sorry. Yeah, we have not raised those rates in, it's been, I think, since I've been here, so at least five years.
Is that the swim team from the high school? What is that?
That would be the stingray swim team, the private team.
The stingrays, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's, it was my understanding, Mr. Keen, that the swim teams were contractual, that maybe based off of this, but don't they have a contract?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so their rates wouldn't necessarily be increasing depending on when?
The amount of time they use.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And I just want to make a statement that it does sound like I'm asking a lot of questions, including the right-of-ways and these fees. It's because we have to answer these questions to our constituents, and when it comes to the right-of-way agreements, I deal with a lot of people in the right-of-way area, so I have to go back to them, explain to them, you know, these answers. So I'm not trying to be difficult, I just am digging in so that I can give people valid information.
Yeah, but that's what we're here for, that these are great questions. So, yeah, thank you for the conversation.
Ms. Mayor, I have one other question.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I don't, maybe it was missing in here. Do we, are we still doing remodel fees for like parties down there, or is that not even in here?
We do for out in the parks.
Yeah, is that in here?
Yeah, it should be, there's no change to.
There's no change? Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I'm trying to find it, the noise complaints, do you know where that is? I know we tried to bulk that up, we affected the scale that we used to determine it, but I was just trying to see if the fees were in here as far as for second, third occurrences and...
Did you happen to say a page number, Councilmember Dolan?
I'm trying to, I couldn't find it, I didn't know if they happened to knew, I was going to check with our...
Is it page 24? Response to a loud party?
There you go. Nice work.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses.
Mayor, council, that fee stays the same. It's still a $229 callback fee.
Do many people pay, I mean, how's our response on that? Are people paying those, or do they tend to just be like a parking permit that for a city you're never coming back to, they just forget about, or?
It's actually pretty rare to charge that. We've not had that happen too frequently.
Okay. All righty, appreciate it.
If I can, Mayor, council, Councilmember Dolan, in terms of, this is the callback fee that's associated, that's charged for the instances that's described here, if you're talking about a violation of the noise ordinance, that wouldn't be a fee, that would be a citation.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just for any, any type of disturbance that we have at any residence or any kind of situation, if we get called back, that we can charge a fee, not just noise.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Councilmember Campbell?
I do, that's, we don't do many of them, but I've heard that we have several callbacks on our bad players of the short-term rental. Can we get some sort of report to kind of see how many callback fees that we're actually could have charged and didn't get, and start tracking that a little bit better? I know you guys are super busy, but I have a plan of attack, so I always have a plan of attack, but if we can kind of start getting an idea of who we could have charged and who we didn't, or maybe start charging, I don't know.
Absolutely, and actually, when it comes to the short-term vacation rentals, we're in the process with the city of working on all of that right now.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from any members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any further discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to introduce ordinance number 21-1269 amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 3.20.040.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? All right, real quick, because I'm always, I'm normally Councilmember Campbell on the questions on this one, so thank you to the finance staff for going through this and doing such a diligent job, but this is one of the more difficult things to have to go through because it's so complex, but I appreciate you guys taking the feedback from council last time and bringing it back every other year, and for all the work that does go into it. So we have a half hour conversation on hours and hours and hours of work that your team has done, and then of course, all of the department heads. So thank you for doing a thorough job, and I think that the questions that were asked were fantastic and great responses, so. All right, with that, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, item 8.4 is introduce ordinance number 21-1267 amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 2.56.111 Municipal Court Administrative Fee Schedule and Jail Cost Recovery to Increase the Warrant Fee, Repeal the Suspension Fee, and Establish a Default Fee. Judge Colley?
Mayor, council, thank you again for the opportunity to address you folks tonight. This is basically a housekeeping matter. The courts in Mojave County currently charge $150 on a warrant fee. We want to change this to reflect what is currently happening. And then, as noted earlier, due to a change in the law, we no longer charge a suspension fee, we will be charging a default fee for those who choose not to abide by court orders, and so that's basically what this is.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of the council for Judge Colley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to introduce ordinance number 21-1267 to amend Lake Havasu City Code Section 2.56.111.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Moses? Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is approve the purchase of four police patrol vehicles from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford. Chief Doyle?
Mayor, council, this item is for the purchase of four new police vehicles, Ford Explorers, through a cooperative purchase agreement with Santan, in the amount of $236,830.20. That cost includes the purchase of the actual vehicle and then the rigging, which runs approximately $18,000 to rig each vehicle. And we do have the money budgeted in this year's budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions of Chief Doyle?
Here you go. Why is it black? Why are they black?
It's just the picture, I think, in our council community.
I get all kinds of questions. Why do they have black vehicles in the desert? I mean...
Yeah, just like our current vehicles, they'll be, they'll be white with the...
Ours will, ours will be the same color. They'll come, look exactly like what we have right now. I didn't realize you were talking about the picture.
Thank you. Make sure the picture's accurate, come on! Thank you.
I'll request that next time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I think it's good to always point out to people at home too, people ask why we don't buy local on things like this, but it's because we have the cooperative agreement with, at this level, and we, they're very custom, and so there are reasons why we don't buy them local, and we buy them through this disagreement, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good point of thought. Chief, you want to talk about cooperative purchase, or maybe Ms. Gary or Ms. Olson?
Well, I can in reference to these, so basically Santan has already done all the procurement. They've gone out to bid. The state's already done it, and Santan was the lowest price, and because Santan is actually dealing in bulk, and so many agencies in Arizona that are using Ford will go through them, they can obviously get a much cheaper price because they do it in bulk, but all the purchasing requirements or procurement requirements have already been met by them, so rather than every individual agency going out through the whole bidding process, we can do that through a cooperative purchase agreement.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I motion to approve the purchase of four police patrol vehicles from Santan Auto Partners LLC, doing business as Santan Ford, in the amount of $236,830.20, utilizing Cooperative Purchase Agreement 2464.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 8.6, approve a development agreement for Ladera South at Havasu Foothills, tract 2388, with Enclaves II LLC, regarding the public improvements and gated entry for the development. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. This development agreement is for Ladera South. Just to give everyone an overview where Ladera South subdivision is, it's in the Havasu Foothills Estates area, at the end of Cherry Tree Boulevard. This square mile here represents Havasu Foothills Estates, and then Ladera South is in this eastern section of that particular subdivision area. Here's something showing the phasing plan. For those who... For those of you who are not aware, Havasu Foothills Estates is three phases. The first phase has been developed for a number of years. The second phase is ongoing right now. And this particular subject property or subdivision is here, again, on the east side of Phase Two. Phase Three is a future phase that is vacant land at this point. Because this developers ask for private streets with public water and wastewater, we need some sort of a development agreement to ensure that both parties are aware who's responsible for what as far as the repair of the infrastructure, the roadways, the sewer and the water lines. So, that's what this development agreement does. That concludes the presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of Mr. Morris? And I believe the applicant's here as well. If the applicant maybe would like to give some brief remarks and that way the council can ask questions there as well.
Yeah, my name is Brendan Wolf. I'm a manager on this. Talking about the private roadway, it's for no reason other than to aesthetically change the road to a cross-section that is not one that the city currently uses. It's just aesthetics. There's no lower quality and any maintenance would be the responsibility of the homeowners association.
Mr. Wolf, is the microphone on?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't want to yell at everybody. Sorry.
Yeah.
Was that loud enough?
Yeah, now we got you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Any, Councilmember Lane, you have questions?
I do.
All right.
And this will be for, actually for Luke. Luke, do you know how many homes or have already been approved for Foothill Estates?
The number of homes in Foothills Estates in Phase One, I'll thank you for the question. In Phase One, there are 223 total lots. At this point, there are 161 CFOs issued for those 223 lots. Actually, I've got a slide prepared here. Let me see if I can show you here. So, in Phase One, there's 223 total lots, 161 CFOs for those properties. In Phase Two, which is the phase that's ongoing and in development now, there's 309 total lots. There's 70 CFOs right now and 77 active building permits. And then, there was a development agreement a few, a number of years ago for the overall Foothills Estates that said about 700 total lots, 697. So, by doing the math, that Phase Three at this point is 165 lots remaining. There's also some language in there about park, but that we can go with, go further in that if you like. Thank you.
No, that's fine. I was just doing the math. That comes out to about 697 homes up there, roughly. And then, is the only route that we still have up to there is Cherry Tree Boulevard?
That's correct. Cherry Tree Boulevard has only paved access to that area.
Are there any plans for building an additional road to go up in there to all of these houses?
I'm not aware of any particular specific plan for that. There is a secondary emergency access shown by this black dotted line that connects to the paved portion of the main streets system within Havasu. That's a secondary emergency access. If there was something to be developed with Phase Three, this vacant property up here, there could be a possibility of some sort of connection. It would have to go most likely across the state land, which could be difficult to get right away or some sort of accessway. But theoretically, I guess it could be done, but I, there's not really any other access without going across state land. Because the property outside the city limits wrapping around this property is state land. And then, of course, this property over here is state land to the west of it.
Right. And just in comparison, do you by chance, off the top of your head, know how many homes are approved for the island?
I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Now, the reason I ask is we have this conversation all the time. Well, we need a second bridge. We need a second bridge to get the people off the island in case there's some sort of event. And here we have almost 700 homes with one access road going up into there. So, I think, and I know this is a final plan, it's already been approved years ago. But we definitely need to have the conversation before we authorize any other building up there on building another access point. Putting 700 homes using one roadway, I think we're getting to the point where it's a little excessive, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
The mayor question. That emergency access road, that's interesting. It goes through state land. How did we get a right-of-way, a lease agreement from them? How did we do that?
You know, that's before my time. I'm not sure exactly how that's done. There's some sort of access agreement that goes through there, though. I'm not sure if...
That would have been done by the original developer, so the city would not have done that. That would have been a requirement.
Interesting.
Councilmember Lynn?
I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but I know I'm gonna... Can I ask the fire chief a question? Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as Councilmember Lane was saying, that that looks like additional 700 houses in that area?
The entire neighborhood.
Okay.
That's everything that's master planned and approved by an ordinance of 2007, was it? When was that? It was on your screen a minute ago, Luke, if you go back to that, the one that you were showing, Councilmember Lane, the number of homes? Sixteen.
So, that's a really populated area. And what's our closest fire station?
Well, our closest one would be Station 4, 3 or 1. So, I am currently working on that. My bid for a comprehensive study is out. And I'll be going through the process of interviewing consultants to assist with the grand master plan for the fire department as a comprehensive analysis. Since I arrived here in Havasu, this has been a concern. I think it was like my second week here that this came up in conversation and I am aware of it. I'm working on it. If you could just please just be patient. Your safety is the most important to me. And there are at least a couple of current areas. The Riviera also is another project that is concerning, too. But right now, up in that area, we do have full sprinklers, so, which is safe for fire protection. We do have a limited response up there, having that one access road up there, Cherry is our main. And that emergency access, just in case we do have some obstruction with Cherry Tree, we can gain access to that, to those parcels. But that is going to be addressed in my study and I'm well aware of it.
Okay. I just want the public to be aware of that, too, because that's a lot of people and I won't bring up response times tonight. But I do have concerns with that area and not having a quick enough response times, not necessarily for fires, but we have drownings, heart attacks, and our firefighters are the ones that are up there usually first. So, I have some really big concerns for that growth in that area.
Yeah, and Councilmember Lynn, I'm gonna address that soon. So, I appreciate your patience in giving me the time to do an accurate analysis of our needs.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any further?
Thank you.
Ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
The chief's up there?
Yes.
Did you mention that all those houses up there have fire sprinklers?
They do. They have residential fire sprinklers. And that was due to the access point underneath our code, underneath Appendix, I'm gonna say D.
You don't have to say the number.
Okay, good. So, we do have there where that was an exception of not having two access points of having equipped automatic sprinkler systems in that's residential development.
So, if the developer built another road that went up there, they wouldn't have to equip the houses with sprinklers?
Well, it really depends on if that road ever does get built up there. And, well, it has to be the access and it has to meet the code, so.
If they built a road and built a fire station up there?
That's a possibility.
Thank you, sir. They would have to read the language and how it was originally written.
I understand that. I mean, since we're talking, what else?
So, I appreciate the questions anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, so I'm gonna get back to what we have in front of us. It's the development agreement for this particular neighborhood. And Mr. Wolf, can you talk a little bit about the roads, maybe the width and what you're planning up in that area?
Yeah, so the right-of-way will be the same, the same width, 60 feet, as what is typical for any Lake Havasu City roadway. Again, it's just aesthetically, it'll drain differently than the normal city cross-sections that are used now. We just wanted to have a different feel for that neighborhood and went with this roadway section. But the homeowners association is going to hold responsibility for, like I said, all that maintenance and the road will be just as good as any other city road.
And we won't be maintaining it at all, so you guys will cover the cost of inputting and then, of course, the HOA will take care of.
Correct.
Yeah, the maintenance of it. Excellent. All right, are there any questions about the agreement that's in front of us tonight? All right, we, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion. And again, what we have in front of us, there was a lot of questions about the neighborhood, which are certainly warranted, but we're talking about development agreement for Ladera South with them putting in their own roadway. With that, add entertaining motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the development agreement for Ladera South at Havasu Foothills, tract 2388, with Enclaves II LLC.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 8.7, ratify and approve the sole source purchase of wastewater treatment plant parts, equipment and service from Parks Inn Corporation and Schreiber. Mr. Fernando?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to request that council to approve sole source purchases of wastewater treatment plant parts, equipment and services. Have a few slides. Schreiber is the original equipment manufacturer and supplier of Mulberry and island treatment plants, process equipment. Schreiber was recently acquired by Parks Inn and is now a Parks Inn brand. Altogether, we have five purchases. The first one is screens for island plant. These screens are located at the Headworks Building and they are five years old. They have a lot of holes in the top, allowing rags and other debris to pass into the plant. The next item, aeration and clarifier bridge wheels. These wheels enable the bridges to move in the tanks. Probably, those of you who took the tours in the treatment plant seen these big open tanks where the bridges are moving, these wheels are the ones that actually move those bridges. So, they wear out pretty fast. The third item is the jack shaft assembly for the bridge. The time has come to replace the worn-out gearboxes and shafts of these assemblies. The fourth item is Mulberry Plant Aeration Diffusers. Those large open tanks, they are aerated. Those are called the biological reactors. And that's where the microorganism digest the wastewater. And this air comes through these fine holes in the diffusers. And those holes get larger or they basically get damaged as time go by. So, their lifetime is about three years. So, the whole process actually depended on how fine these air bubbles are. So, we need to control their flow. The last item is filter plate operations at Mulberry Treatment Plant. We recently added a new tertiary filter to increase our treatment capacity. It's time to upgrade some components of existing two filters. Those are the original filters. And that's all, and I'm happy to answer any related questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Fernando? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to ratify a sole source expenditure in the amount of $26,573 and approve sole source purchases exceeding $50,000 for fiscal year 2021-22 for wastewater treatment plant parts, equipment and service from Parks Inn Corporation and Schreiber, a Parks Inn brand.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.8 is award bid for the electrical upgrades, well number two and well number nine project to AME Electrical Contracting, Inc. I'm Mr. Sloan. I believe you're gonna introduce a new team member.
I am. Good evening, Mayor, council, thank you. Yeah, I want to take this opportunity really quickly to introduce our new project manager, Kathy Rasch. She has many years of experience with local governments doing infrastructure projects and capital improvement projects and actually previously worked for the city of Lake Havasu for many years doing capital improvement projects. So, we're very excited to have her back on the team and with that, I'll turn it over to her to do the staff report.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Sloan, and welcome, Mrs. Rasch.
All right, thank you and thank you, Dan. Good evening, Mayor and city council. The item before you tonight is award bid for electrical upgrades for well number two and well number nine construction project. These wells are located on the island near London Bridge Beach and are in the city's central well field. These two wells, along with the horizontal collector well, currently provide all the water supply for the city. And currently, the horizontal collector well is the only well of the three that currently has a backup power supply. The project consists of the purchase and installation of two new diesel generators and the required infrastructure to provide a backup power supply to both these wells. Bids for the project were opened on August 18, 2021, and a total of two bids were received. The apparent low bidder is AME Electrical, Inc. from Tempe, Arizona, with a bid amount of $398,330. The engineer's estimate for the project was $335,500. If awarded tonight, the project will begin, is estimated to begin in October this year and will have a contract time of 190 calendar days and will be estimated to be completed by May of 2022. Sufficient funds in the amount of $398,330 are available in the irrigation and drainage district, fund balance, the IDD, and has been designated for this project. This concludes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mrs. Rasch? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mayor, I had a question?
Yes, Councilmember Moses?
I was kind of wondering, are these two wells gonna be obsolete once we get our second, our secondary source complete off of London Bridge Road?
No, these two wells will not be obsolete. They will still...
We'll still be needing these for years to come.
Absolutely. We talked before about doing the rehabilitation of the horizontal collector well. These wells will provide backup water supply during that time as well as the wells in the north well field that we're developing now. And then, when we get the horizontal collector well back up, these will continue to operate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, add entertaining motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to award the bid for the electrical upgrades, well number two and well number nine project to AME Electrical Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $398,330.00.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Moses?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is current events. Are there any current council committee reports? All right, moving on then to item 10, our future meetings. Well, our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, September 28, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And then, we'll also have a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 12, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Item 11, are there any future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I know we've asked staff to go back and look at the... I know we've asked staff to go back and look at the, the helicopter and ordinance as the issues with that in the past as a balloon pilot, you know, five to eight years ago. I would also ask that maybe staff can give us an option as far as maybe not reversing it per se, but maybe giving us a permit option. As a balloon pilot, I do like that there is a little bit of control by the city to control such things as insurance and safety and things like that. And if we have a bad player, it gives us the ability to do something. So I was hoping maybe staff could give us an option, maybe not just reversing or changing the ordinance, but maybe also giving us an option of what, keeping maybe the wording the way it is, but the, the length, the, the permit process, so we could still allow these businesses to operate under a permit. So, thank you.
Okay, council member, all right, excuse me. Oh, gotcha.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So what are, what are we doing now? So we already gave direction to come back, to give us options on jumping out of an airplane, which is skydiving. Okay, skydiving, like what is that word? Skydiving and also for helicopter operations. And then you want a permit option presented as well?
Also to look, look into the option, maybe not just changing the ordinance and getting rid of it, because I think it does have merit and it was there for a specific, and even a balloon pilot who had to come to city council five, six, seven years ago to control changes then, because I thought they were a little overreaching. But I think it does have its merit. And when you have a, especially in the balloon industry, we had, we, when we dealt with this, there was a pilot in town that was creating some issues and because of this, we all didn't fly and that person ended up leaving town and crashing into other power lines in other cities. So I think it does give us some sort of control that I wouldn't like to see us give. So I'd like to just see options as far as, we can still allow them to operate their businesses, but because the, the ordinance does say by permit. So if we can somehow maybe work on the permitting process to make sure they meet insurance requirements and safety precautions and, you know, things like that, you know, because the FAA also determines a lot of this that we don't need to get into. But I think as far as them taking off and landing outside of an airport is something that we need to keep a close eye on and have some sort of control over, so.
Understood.
Councilmember Dolan, I really agree with you and we could even look, I would like to look into a special a use permit discussion as well, because if you get a player out there and then you have a bunch of neighbors complaining, maybe we can come back and look at it every, I don't want to put a bunch of undue hardship on them, but like every three years, take a look to see if the neighbors and everybody is happy with our decision. Because lately we're in trouble.
When it's on the agenda. So, yeah, we're getting a little too in the weeds right now, but great. You, staff, you have what you need based on, okay, great. And then was that it? Or did you have a future agenda as well?
Oh, wait, oh, just, yes.
A motion and a second on that.
Yes, I have a motion to discuss the current weight and water. Water and sewer rate study on condos and apartments. The interpretation of the rate study seems completely different than what I remember it to be and never did I assume when we were doing single-family homes with certain amount of revenues that that would include to be the same, be the same as every apartment and every condo be treated like a single family. And then I just found out today that the condos and apartments should be responsible for the flow rates as well on top of that. And it's causing a lot of undue hardship. So I definitely think we need further discussion with the possibility of retroing it for a while, but.
If I may, Councilmember Campbell, if you're willing, if we could wait to our next council meeting to have that as a council agenda item, we just learned all this information. Let us do a little bit of research and see if we can't solve it with what we've already done. And then if that's not the case, then we can bring it back at a future, a future meeting.
So we are gonna have as an agenda item, is what you're saying?
No, we would, we may have already done the action necessary to achieve this, but we need to be able to go through some of the information that was presented today and the rate study of the ordinance where I did. And then if that's not solving it, we'll certainly bring it back to council to address it and, and rectify the situation at the will of the council.
It needs to be pretty quickly though, because these are big bills these people are writing.
Big bills. And, and the city has a great track record of working through customer service with, with these residents as we do it. So we'll move it expeditiously, at least, expeditiously, but.
That's a big word.
Yeah, it wasn't a word for this late at night.
Tired.
But so if you just give us a, a chance so that council can get up to speed, staff can get up to speed on how they're implementing. And then if that's not the case, it'll certainly come back and we'll rectify it. Is that fair?
Sooner the better.
Yes, yeah, no, we'll be on it, so.
I know you will. Thanks.
All right, is there any other future discussion items? All right, with that, item twelve, I'd like, all right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Everybody, thank you for being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time.